Call to order the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors business meeting Tuesday, December 19, 2017, 7:00 PM, Pennsylvania County Court, General District Courtroom, Edwin R. Shields Courthouse Edition, 11 Bank Street, Chatham and Gillian. Roll call, Ms. Flippin.
Mr. Barber.
Here.
Mr. Hagerman.
Here.
Mr. Blackstock.
Present.
Mr. Davis.
Present.
Mr. Scares.
Here.
Mr. Barksdale.
Present.
Mr. Warren.
Here.
I would ask that you observe a moment of silence with me, please. Thank you. I'd ask that you stand in the class.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands,
Are there items to be added to the agenda? General.
Ms. Chairman, I have an item to add to the agenda, community foundation, ground approval and appropriation of the Pennsylvania county catsome and the Ringo rail train.
Mr. Warren, since that was mentioned during the work session, if we proved to add that, it's 13A.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, seconded by Mr. Barber. Seeing none, discussion. All in favor, raise your right hand. Chief Nance, are you going to approve or reject the agenda with the addition?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve the agenda with the added additions.
Motion made by Mr. Barber.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hagerman. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand.
It's in the front of that binder.
It's in the front, it's the purple.
It should be a different color.
Right there, it's purple.
Thank you, it was covered up, we've got a lot of stuff on this desk tonight. Hearing of the citizens, ladies and gentlemen, when you come forward, please state your name and district. We would appreciate you speaking into the microphone so your comments can be heard. The hearing of the citizens format is not a question and answer session, but I assure you that the board will be listening to your comments. Each person, each comment will have three minutes. When the amber light comes on, you have approximately one minute remaining to speak. I will call you in order you signed up. And the first citizen to sign up is Herbert Hudson. Mr. Hudson.
My name is Herbert Hudson, and I'm from the Tunstall District. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and honorable citizens of Pennsylvania County, I would like to take this opportunity to remind you all of the meeting, of the comments I made at the beginning of your last meeting. So I'm sure this meeting will be filled with pleasantries and thank yous for your service. I, for one, would like to make sure you hear my disappointment, the performance of this board and this administration. I would have been offended to see the amount of money spent with zero discussion held in a public forum. It should be no surprise to each of you that the median gross household income in Pennsylvania County is $47,000. The percent living in poverty is 14.1 percent, this according to the U.S. Census data. So since I was invited by Mr. Smitherman to peel back the layers, I want to start with making sure that you're aware of these statistics. Approximately 48 months ago, there was greater than $36 million available in general county funds. What is that number now? I'll help you a little bit, it's less than 20 million. How long ago, how long until we have real cash flow problems? I'm certain that Ms. Van De Iden and Mr. Smitherman won't be talking about that tonight. Mr. Smitherman tells me that there is no more kicking of the can and this board has to clean up the mess. Where have we been for the last year? I'm certain last month I also brought up the fact that with your decisions and Mr. Smitherman's advisement, the tax increase was certain. This prediction was certainly not far from reality, as was explained to me by Mr. Smitherman. I would like to refer you to page 33 of your board packet, where there is a 19 cent increase in four county departments. The expansion of government is what got us here, and as a taxpaying citizen, I specifically blame each of you and your willingness to allow Mr. Smitherman to explain, expand government and when you already knew spending was, as Mr. Smitherman says, untenable. This, my friends, is a disgrace to each and every member of this board, Mr. Smitherman and the administration of this county. In the interest of transparency, I also hope that you are here, are able to address the fact that you plan to or have considered the addition of a solid waste disposal fee yet again. If you need help, it's on page 10 of your board packet. These items were all addressed by Mr. Smitherman and provided to the board, so there is no more excuse that you are not aware. So look at these statistics I presented to you and tell me that taxing this county makes any sense. This board and this administration continues to burden the county, the citizens of this county, which can barely afford their daily living expenses with its frivolous spending. Our families are sick and tired of you spending our dollars with absolute disregard for providing services. I would also like to take this opportunity to remind you that per the code of Virginia, it takes 10 percent of the voters in your electoral district to have you recalled. Thus always to tyrants. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Next was Ms. Lisa Toot.
Thank you, I'm Lisa Toot, I live in the Bannister District, I'm also the director of the Public Library, as I think you know, and I am here for pleasantries and thank yous. I wanted particularly to thank Mr. Barksdale and Mr. Hagerman for their service on the board and their support of the library over their period on the board, and to thank the entire board for their support of the library. I think without your support, that we and the board and the foundation of the library would not be able to provide the services to the county that I think the people of the county deserve and expect. I also wanted to end with a sharing with you, since last time you got a T-shirt from the Chamber of Commerce, the library also has T-shirts commemorating the 250 years of the county, so I was going to give one to Mr. Hagerman and Mr. Barksdale, and then realized I could not do that without also providing one for each of our board members to say thank you and, as you're mowing your lawns in these, remember the library. Thank you. I will have these afterward.
Consent agenda, item eight.
Ms. Chairman, I make a motion we approve the consent agendas presented in the package.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, Ms. Flippin.
Mr. Barber.
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman.
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Scares.
Yes.
Mr. Barksdale.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes. We have a couple of items that we're going to take care of in the consent agenda that involve resolutions, so I'll ask the board, the entire board, to come down front, if you don't mind, so we can do those and read those resolutions.
You want to set the microphone?
That would be great. I don't know if I just relocate this.
It might be easier to bring that microphone.
This is to honor Mr. Hagerman for his service on the board. Resolution from the board, I'll read it to Mr. Hagerman. At the business meeting of the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors held on Tuesday, December 19, 2017, in the General District Courtroom of the Edwin R. Shields Courthouse Edition, the following resolution was presented and adopted. The Honorable Jerry A. Hagerman was elected to the Board of Supervisors of Pennsylvania County as a Calhoun's Grettona District Representative and has been a member of the board for a total of six years, and whereas Jerry A. Hagerman was first elected to the Board of Supervisors as a Calhoun's Grettona District Representative and held office as such from January 3, 2012, through December 31, 2015, and was reelected for a two-year term, taking office as such on January 4, 2016, through December 31, 2017. And whereas Jerry A. Hagerman has tirelessly given his time and effort to improve Pennsylvania County by serving on the board, subcommittees including Finance, Solid Waste, Personal Property, and Building, Legislative, Computer, Computer, Radio, Telecommunications, Board of Supervisor, School Joint Liaison Committee, Economic Development, Animal Welfare Facility, and Fire and Rescue Policy Board. And whereas, as an appointed representative of the Board of Supervisors, Jerry A. Hagerman also has served on the Damboll Pennsylvania County Regional Industrial Facilities Authority, Metro Planning Organization, Pennsylvania Community Action, Tri-County AEP Re-Licensing, Tri-County Lake Advisory, and the Pennsylvania County Planning Commission. And whereas Jerry A. Hagerman has, by his dedication and leadership faithfully and dutifully served the Board of Supervisors and the citizens of Pennsylvania County, now therefore, be it hereby resolved, on behalf of the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors and all the citizens of Pennsylvania County, that we formally express our sincere appreciation to Jerry A. Hagerman for his outstanding service and exemplary leadership, and wish him the best in his retirement from government service, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be presented to Jerry A. Hagerman, given under my hand, 19th day of December 2017, Robert Warren Chairman and David Smitherman Clerk.
You've been a busy guy, Jerry. Congratulations, Jerry.
It's been a pleasure to serve with you.
And, Mr. Hagerman, we have a couple of other things from the board and staff, and it says, presented to Jerry A. Hagerman in recognition of six years of outstanding dedication and service to the citizens of Pennsylvania County as the Board of Supervisor, Calhoun's Grettona District Representative, January 2012 through December 2017, presented by the Board of Supervisors of Pennsylvania County, December 16, 2017. Thank you so much. It has been my pleasure to serve with you, and I also have a moment. Jeff, you have some time.
Get over here by Jesse, he was doing just...
Well, I would, I'd love to, and I'm so choked up, I can't. Seeing them to parts, making me cry.
This Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors Resolution 2017-12-01, as a business meeting of the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors held on Tuesday, December 19, 2017, in the General District Courtroom of the Edwin R. Shields Courthouse Edition, the following resolution was presented and adopted. Whereas, the Honorable Jesse L. Barksdale was elected to the Board of Supervisors of Pennsylvania County as the Bannister Directive, excuse me, District Representative, and has been a member of the board for a total of six years. And whereas, Jesse L. Barksdale was first elected to the Board of Supervisors as the Bannister District Representative and held office as such from January 3, 2012, through December 31, 2015, and was reelected for a two-year term, taking office on such on January 4, 2016, for a term ending December 31, 2017. And whereas, during his tenure, his tenure on the Board of Supervisors, Jesse L. Barksdale was Chairman of the Board of Supervisors in 2014 and 2016. And whereas, Jesse L. Barksdale has tirelessly given his time and effort to improve Pennsylvania County by serving on subcommittees of the Board of Supervisors, including Finance, Solid Waste, Personnel, Property, and Building, Legislative, Computer, Radio, and Telecommunications, Board of Supervisor, School Joint Liaison, Joint Sites and Facilities, Economic Development, Animal Welfare Facility, Agricultural Development Board, Fire and Rescue Policy Board, Beautification, and the Board of Supervisors Youth Commission Advisory Committee. And whereas, as an appointed representative of the Board of Supervisors, Jesse L. Barksdale also served on the Damboll Pennsylvania Regional Industrial Facilities Authority, Dan River Business Development Center, Local Emergency Planning Commission, Pennsylvania County Social Services Board, West Peatmont Planning District Commission, Damboll Pennsylvania Community Services Board, Rooneoke River Basin Association, and with the Virginia Association of Counties. Phew, that's a lot of work. Jesse L. Barksdale not only served as the Board of Supervisors Representative, but was also served on its nomination in Environmental and Agricultural Steering Committees, and whereas, Jesse L. Barksdale has, by his dedication and leadership, faithfully and dutifully served the Board of Supervisors and the citizens of Pennsylvania County, now therefore, be it hereby resolved, and on behalf of the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors and all the citizens of Pennsylvania County, we express our sincere appreciation to Jesse L. Barksdale for his outstanding service and exemplary leadership that has made him a significant figure in history, and we wish him the best. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be presented to Jesse L. Barksdale, given under my hand, this 19th day of December 2017, Robert Bob Warren Chairman and David M. Smitherman Clerk.
We have a couple of other things, Mr. Barksdale. Presented to Jesse L. Barksdale in recognition of six years of outstanding dedication and service to the citizens of Pennsylvania County, as the Board of Supervisors, Bannister District Representative, January 2012 through December 2017, presented by the Board of Supervisors of Pennsylvania County, Virginia, December 16, 2017.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you.
And we also have the justice. Thank you very much. Y'all want to reach to the end of comments?
Yes, at the end, yes.
I won't do that, y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Warren.
Hey, guess, look, we want for the supervisor to cover for the...
We will move to the public hearing session for rezoning. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to Article 5, Division 6 of the Pennsylvania County Zoning Ordinance, we, the Board of Supervisors, have been empowered to hear and decide specific zoning issues and zoning map changes in support of said ordinance. In accomplishing this important task, we are responsible for promoting the health, safety, and general public welfare of the citizens of Pennsylvania County. We must ensure that all of our decisions and regulations be directed to these goals and that each be consistent with the environment, the comprehensive plan, and in the best interest of Pennsylvania County, its citizens, and its prosperity. Anyone here to speak to the board regarding zoning cases will be limited to three minutes. At this time, I will open the public hearing for case number one, Ralph L. Jones Jr., Chatham Blairs District, at 7:20.
Mr. Chairman, case one, R-17-044, Ralph J. Jones Jr. has petitioned to rezone 4.55 acres located on State Road 750, Whitmore School Road, in the Chatham Blairs Election District from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District for agricultural use, specifically the raising of cattle. Once the property is rezoned to A1, then all use is listed under Section 35-178 or permitted use. The Planning Commission with no opposition recommended granting petitioner's request by 6-0 vote. Staff summary is enclosed in the board packet, and Mr. Chairman Ralph Jones Jr. is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Jones, do you have anything to add, sir?
No, sir.
Stay close, we might have some questions. I will close the public hearing, as no citizens have signed up, at 7:22. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion in case one, R-17-044, that we rezone from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District, 4.55 acres located on State Road 750, Whitmore School Road, in the Chatham Blairs Election District.
Second. Got a motion, second, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, Ms. Flippin.
Mr. Barber.
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman.
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock.
Yes.
Mr. Scares.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Barksdale.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes. Mr. Jones, prompt, if you can. Thank you. Case number two, Larry M. White and Ann M. Fight. I will open the public hearing at 7:23. Mr. Sykes.
Thank you. Case two, R-17-045, Larry and Ann White have petitioned to rezone 0.89 of an acre located on State Road 677, White Fall Road, in the Bannister Election District from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to combine with the adjacent parcel of land that's already zoned Agricultural District. Once the property is rezoned to A1, then all use is listed under Section 35-178 or permitted use. The Planning Commission with no opposition recommended granting petitioner's request by 6-0 vote. Staff summary is enclosed in your board packet, and Mr. Chairman Richard Armstrong is here to represent the petition.
Thank you. Do you have anything to add, Mr. Armstrong?
No, I don't.
Thank you. No citizens signed up, I will close the public hearing at 7:24. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the board approve case two, R-17-045, to rezone 0.89 of an acre from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District General. The rezoning fully, is fully supported by the comprehensive plan.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Barksdale, seconded by Mr. Davis, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, Ms. Flippin.
Mr. Barksdale.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Scares.
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock.
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman.
Yes.
Mr. Barber.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes. Case three, Mary S. Shavely and others. I will open the public hearing at 7:26. Mr. Sykes.
Yes, case three, R-17-046, Mary S. Shavely and others have petitioned to rezone a total of 23.11 acres, two parcels of land located on U.S. Highway 58 West, Martinville Highway, in the Tunstall Election District, from RC1 Residential Combined Subdivision District to B2 Business District General, to serve as a base of operations for Gemstone LLC, a bridge painting contractor. Once the properties are rezoned to B2, then all use is listed under Section 35-365 or permitted use. The Planning Commission with no opposition recommended granting the petitioner's request by 6-0 vote. Staff summary is enclosed in the board packet, and Mr. Chairman Art Kraft is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Kraft, do you have anything to add, sir?
No, sir.
Thank you. No one signed up for this case, I will close the public hearing at 7:28. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, case R-17-046, I'd like to make a motion we rezone this property from RC1 to B2.
Second. Motion made, seconded by Mr. Hagerman, motion made by Mr. Barber. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say I commend Gemstone for sticking with this process and getting it, they've been trying to get the candidate a long time, and I know they had some issues up there, and they went and worked it out, and I didn't get anybody this time complaining, so I commend them for getting it worked out and locating them, put them in the camp. Glad to have them here as a business.
Thank you, Mr. Barber. Any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call, Ms. Flippin.
Mr. Barber.
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman.
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock.
Yes.
Mr. Scares.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Barksdale.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes. Mr. Kraft, prompt, if you can rezonate. Thank you, thank you, sir.
I'd like to take that, I'll go and thank the board, I think this is going to be a big company for this town.
Thank you, thank you. Case number four, Frank Lacy Jr. Mr. Sykes. I'll open the hearing at 7:29, and no one quit.
All right, case four, R-17-047, Frank M. Lacy Jr. has petitioned to rezone 10 acres located on State Road 913, Feral Lane, in the Tunstall Election District, from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District, to make the zoning consistent with adjacent parcels of land zoned A1. Once the property is rezoned to A1, then all use is listed under Section 35-178 or permitted use. The Planning Commission with no opposition recommended granting the petitioner's request by 6-0 vote. Staff summary is enclosed in the board packet, and Mr. Chairman Richard Armstrong is here to represent the petition.
Do you have anything to add, Mr. Armstrong?
I do not.
Okay. No one signed up for this case either, so I'll close the public hearing at 7:30. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, case R-17-047, I can make a motion we rezone this part from R1 to A1, and point that's consistent with the comprehensive plan in the area.
Thank you, Mr. Barber, I have a second.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Barber, seconded by Mr. Blackstock. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, Ms. Flippin.
Mr. Barksdale.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Scares.
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock.
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman.
Yes.
Mr. Barber.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Armstrong, it's been rezoned. We'll move to item D, Pennsylvania County Code, hearing one, public hearing to receive citizens' input on the proposed amendment to Chapter 2, Section 222-22.
Yes, I'll take this, Mr. Chairman. Mary Moore, resident of Green Farm Road in the county, that's the road that serves as the border between the Dan River and the Bannister Elec...
Can I open the public hearing?
Oh, sure, sorry.
Open the public hearing at 7:31. Sorry.
Sorry, I jumped the gun there. Mary Moore petitioned the board to declare Green Farm Road and the designated area that's proposed is on page 61 of your packet, to create a restricted area where dogs are not allowed to run at large. County staff has verified that there are 62 property owners on Green Farm Road, and 42 have signed the petition supporting the restricted area, representing 67.74 percent of the total Green Farm Road property owners. This public hearing has run in the newspaper, and staff recommends opening and holding the public hearing, and then there's a motion in the packet for the board to consider.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. You did have one person sign up, and that's Mary Moore.
First, I would like to say I'm 73, and my husband's 74, and has a lot of health problems. I take care of the yard by myself, which is enough without all the other things that goes on. I say this to let you know how frustrating the dog problem is. But first, we can't blame the dogs, it's the owners. One, I have pictures of holes that the dogs have dug in my yard, some buried deep and could cause a person injury if it stepped in. There were about 15 of them, I had to get dirt and fill them in. Two, the dogs drag things in the yard, I have to walk my yard before I cut the grass. One time I overlooked, that stuff got caught in my lawn mower and I couldn't get it out. There's dog poop all over my yard, five or six piles every day. You have to watch where you walk, or it gets tracked in your house or car. Four, dogs jump on the people, come to my house messing up the clothes. This is not right or fair to put up with on my own property. The complaints I heard while getting the signature for this petition were... The complaints I heard while getting the signature for this petition was, one, dogs getting their trash, even if it was in a truck, and throwing it everywhere. Two, dogs gathering in the road making it hard to drive past. Three, people afraid to walk. Four, do not know if the dogs have had their shots. Five, again, dog poop in their yard. Dog, six, dogs chase the kids riding their dirt bikes on their own property. Next, they go to other people's house and eat their dog food. This is no way for a neighborhood to be or for citizens to put up with. A lot of people who signed this petition own dogs, but do not let them roam the neighborhood. They have a fence or in the house, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Miss Moore. That was the last citizen that signed up, so I'll close the public hearing at 7:33. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to amend the Pennsylvania County Code, section 2.2-22, running at large restriction in designated areas to include Green Farm Road, State Road 719 in its entirety.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Barxtown, seconded by Mr. Davis. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, Ms. Flippin.
Mr. Barber.
Yes.
Mr. Hagman.
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock.
Yes.
Mr. Scares.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Barxtown.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes. Hearing two, public hearing to receive citizens' input on proposed amendment to chapter six, dash, six point three. Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Let me open the public hearing.
Gotcha. Try to set me up that time.
7:34, try to set you up again.
If the board remembers, in October, on October 5th, 2017, it deeded a very small triangle piece of property to the Northside High School Museum Corporation. It's only .0600 of an acre, and located on it is a sign commemorating the site of the former Northside High School. And this property is located at the corner of Northside Drive and Payne Street in Gretna, Virginia. Northside High School has come forward and submitted an application for that small triangular property to be considered for real estate tax exemption because of their nonprofit status. The parcel is valued at $900, and if the board follows through and grants it tax exemption, the financial impact to the county is approximately $5.31 annually. So if the board chooses to exempt this property, there's a motion they can consider at the bottom of page 77 in your board packet.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. No one signed up, so I close this public hearing at 7:35. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to amend Pennsylvania County Code, section 6.6-3, real estate property exemption by qualifying classification or designation to include real estate property known as GPIN number 2530-38-6169, located on the corner of the Northside Drive and Payne Street Extension in Gretna, Virginia, owned by the Northside High School Museum, Inc., with the retroactive exemption date of October 5th, 2017.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Barxtown, seconded by Mr. Davis, he beat you, Ms. Blackstock. Any discussion? Roll call, Ms. Flippin.
Mr. Barber.
Yes.
Mr. Hagman.
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock.
Yes.
Mr. Scares.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Barxtown.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes. Public hearing to hear citizens' input on proposed amendments to the FY 2018 county budget. Ms. Vanderheide, I'll open the public hearing at 7:35.
We are having a public hearing tonight to hear citizen input on amending the Pennsylvania County FY 2018 budget to include the E911 tower lease in the amount of $2 million. And this was approved by you all to refinance the existing E911 tower lease back on November 28th. That total was $10,987,800. And in order for us to spend the money to equip the towers, construct the towers, and to pay closing costs, we do have to have this amount of $2 million added to our existing budget in order to make these expenditures. Because that amount exceeds 1% of our current budget, there's a requirement by the Code of Virginia that you all hold this public hearing, and that's why we are here tonight. We did have to advertise in the newspaper, and we did that on November the 6th, which satisfies the requirement that the public was notified of this amendment. So I would like to recommend that you all amend our budget by $2 million and hear any citizens that are here to speak for or against it.
Thank you, Ms. Vanderheide. We did have one citizen sign up, Herbert Hudson.
Herbert Hudson, not a whole lot I can say that I haven't already said, but you've already spent the money. But at the last beating, I was really appalled to hear the entire board vote yes for this without any real discussion, in public, anyway. For to spend $2 million on some towers that, as Jimmy Davis says, should fix the problem. It's still less than what was originally planned and would have fixed the problem, but there again, we spent $2 million without anything that would truly fix the problem, for sure. So I would like to congratulate you all on research that was obviously so thorough that it resulted in a should and may be fixed. As a firefighter myself, I depend on our radio system to work. So to quote Mr. Davis, he said, "In the interest of integrity and public safety," he voted yes. So in the interest of integrity and public safety, I would like to thank you all for your desire to spend $2 million on a should and might fix an issue to a problem that may cause some, cost someone their life. If you're going to spend millions of dollars to fix a problem, then fix the problem. Spending money is not the issue. Spending money appropriately is. Mr. Smith explained to me that my previous comments were far from representative in reality. I firmly disagree. There is nothing in my previous comments or tonight that is not completely based in facts. This, my friends, is real transparency. So go ahead. I'm aware that your decisions have already been made. Spend our money, but now you can at least not claim ignorance when you come back and ask to spend more to fix the problem. So in closing, I'd like to appreciate you all. I appreciate all of your service. However, some of your decisions leave a lot to be desired. Thank you.
And Ms. Hudson, I will close the public hearing at 7:37. That was the last individual that signed up. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the board of supervisors approve and appropriate a total of $2 million to the E911 Bond Fund, Fund 416.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Barxtown, seconded by Mr. Davis. Any discussion of the motion?
I'd just like to make, I'd like to make a comment. I'd like to make a comment. As chairman of the Finance Committee, the Pennsylvania County Fire and Rescue Association asked, they were very concerned about the lack of reception on our radio system in a Tunstall area. And so we had our staff to take a look at those issues that they were concerned about up there, when they were fighting fires, answering rescue calls, and also with the sheriff's office. In looking into that problem in detail, we also realized that we had a problem in the Berry Hill area of the county, which is where the industrial park is located. And we know that we're going to have growth down there, and with growth, you'll have 911 calls. So what we did, we decided, county admin looked into it, I apologize, I'm a little choked up tonight. I've been feeding hay all day, I've got cattle. By the way, don't go into that business. The county looked into those problems and come back and said, "We not only have a problem with any Tunstall area, but we have a problem at Berry Hill, too." So we directed them to get with the radio folks and see what we could do to resolve these issues the cheapest way possible. And this is why this is only agenda tonight, is because of the original request from the Fire and Rescue Association to address an issue with our volunteers.
Thank you, Ms. Blackstock. Any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call, Ms. Flippin.
Mr. Barber.
Yes.
Mr. Hagman.
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock.
Yes.
Mr. Scares.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Barxtown.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes. Item 10, Comprehensive Services Act, 2018 budget amendment. Ms. Vanderheide.
This was originally presented to you all back on November the 28th, and it is a request to carry over funds from the 2017 budget for the Comprehensive Services Act, CSA, in the amount of $1,198,873.18 of state funds and $317,176.94. A motion was made by Mr. Blackstock and seconded by Mr. Barxtown, and it has now met the 10-day layover requirement for you all to be able to vote on that tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Vanderheide. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, roll call, Ms. Flippin.
Mr. Barber.
Yes.
Mr. Hagman.
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock.
Yes.
Mr. Scares.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Barxtown.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes. Item 11, award master lease financing program and a corresponding reimbursement resolution. Ms. Vanderheide.
The county issued an RFP for Pennsylvania County Industrial and Development Authority back November the 10th, 2017, for financing a master lease program in the amount of $5 million. And we advertised that RFP in two local newspapers. We posted it on our county's public notice board and as the county's website. And a copy of the RFP was also sent to 37 banks. The county's purchasing department did receive two proposals for the master lease financing program. One was from BBNT, and the other one was from First National Bank. I have attached a copy of the equipment description list for you all to review. It includes landfill equipment totaling $880,000, courthouse replacement of a chiller for $250,000, the purchase of the Mount Herman Library, and renovations at $625,000, purchase and outfit of a 12,000-square-foot industrial facility in Ringgold totaling $1,050,000, and then a local match of funds for tobacco grant for Project Lignam in the amount of $1,100,000. So the total of all those projects come to $3,905,000. I, along with our financial advisor, Kevin Roddy with PFM, reviewed the proposals, and we determined that BBNT was the better choice for the county. They did have a lower interest rate. They also currently have the social services building or the human services building located on 29, which we offered as collateral for this deal. And it was just easier as far as transacting if they already had that collateral to get it, unless interest rates proved otherwise. So in this particular instance, we're dealing with taxable, a taxable rate, as well as a tax-exempt rate. Our tax-exempt rate that was offered to us is 3.59%, and the taxable rate is 4.39%. And the way it's structured is our tax-exempt rate is used on public facilities or public things that need to be, happen for the county, such as the landfill equipment, the courthouse replacement of the chiller, as well as the Mount Herman Library. So they would all be at the 3.59% rate and would be amortized over a 10-year period. And that would start immediately, we would start making payments in August of 19, of 18, for the FY 19 budget year. The 4.39% taxable rate would be for private use, and that would be for our industrial, industrial development-type projects, such as the purchase of the building in Ringgold and the outfit. But just so you all are aware, the company that would be locating there would be making those payments. After 10 months, they would start making the payment. So that would really be of no cost to you. It would come to the IDA and filter through to us, and we would make that payment for them. The third piece of that, the $1.1 million for Project Lignam, that is a tobacco grant match that we will have to pay. And right now, that money, we're not sure if we're going to need that money or not, but it's in here for us to be able to do that in this deal. The reason we're putting so many projects in this particular draw instead of saying, "Well, let's wait till later," is because of closing costs. Closing costs are 2% of whatever you borrow, so we're trying to get the most bang for our buck. These are things that are not made-up things. These are definite needs. You all have been apprised of these things and things that we do know that we need. So that would be at the labor rate, which is, the current rate right now stands at 2% plus the 1.5%, but we would be able to draw that later in the year. We wouldn't have to do that right off the get-go, because we didn't feel like that would be the best use of our funds to draw money down if we did not need them. So it's a very complicated deal, so I definitely am here to answer questions. What we would like as an approval today is to award the bid to BBNT as the bank that got the award, and then we would also like for you all to approve a reimbursement resolution. What that vehicle allows for you to do is between now and the time that we close on the loan, if we have to make a purchase, we can reimburse ourselves if we make an outlay of the money before we get the money into the bank from the loan proceeds. So that is the reason for that resolution and why we need your approval for that as well tonight. And with that, I'm here if you have any questions for me.
Ms. Vanderheide, I will certainly jump into this. Mr. Hudson has talked about spending money, and you're right, we do spend money. But I would like just to explain a few things to you, my own self, and please stand, you can fill everybody in. The $880,000, $880,000, Mr. Hudson, is simply this. The landfill equipment, there's three pieces of equipment there that is unusable due to O-H and other items. It's, if we do not have this money to replace those items, we have to shut the landfill down. It's very, very simple there. The chiller replacement, item number two, $250,000, that's not much to do there, except we'll have to close the courthouse down. I don't think that's going to go over to the judges. Mount Herman Law &amp; Beer, same thing, $600,000. Economic Development, incentive, that money is for the current economic, actually is for economic development. And the other match, $2,000,000, $2,150,000 for Berry Hill Industrial Park, that should pay for itself just in a few months, if it goes right. And you had, did I miss anything? I don't like it either. And I even made some notes here that Eric County's share of that is 1.1 million. So, but the city of Danville, hopefully they'll come up with 1.1 million also. So.
It's only Berry Hill.
Yes. So if anyone has anything else, I'd like to fill that in.
Ms. Vanderheide, I want you to tell the public and let the newspapers who are here tonight know exactly how much the board of supervisors can actually maneuver as far as, if we had $100 billion, how much does the board of supervisors have authority over to maneuver?
Well, that's a loaded question.
I'm asking the question.
Well, as far as moving money and spending money and that kind of thing, you know, like I said in the previous public hearing, you all only have the authority to move around money that's less than 1% of the entire budget. So, if anything exceeds that, we have to have a public hearing. In this particular deal, it was a $5 million deal, and BBNT, as well as American National, I mean, First National Bank, is allowing us to come back to them to get the difference, but it is not without public scrutiny. It is not without board approval. It's not without bank approval. We can take something, and we all could agree to it, and the bank could say, "No, we don't agree to this." So, it does come with lots of strings attached. And I have worked tirelessly in negotiating with the bank to get the very best deal that we can have and make the most of county funds to, you know, make sure that we are spending our citizens' money in the best way possible. Because certainly, we wouldn't want to just borrow $5 million just to have it sitting in the bank. You know, we want to have viable projects that are definitely needed. So, you know, I feel like that, you know, we do have great oversight as far as making sure the public is aware and giving them every opportunity to come and voice their opinion to you all.
Any other questions for Ms. Vanderheide? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, before you entertain a motion, I got a question for the county attorney. Mr. Hunt, I was not involved with this particular loan, but I do sit on the Board of Directors at First National Bank, which is not going to be awarded this contract, but was part of the negotiation. Do I need to abstain from a vote?
I don't think you have any legal conflict, but I will always remind a city board member, the General Compulsed Interest Act states that even if you don't have a legal conflict, you should avoid the appearance of impropriety. So, I would advise you just to abstain as well.
Okay. Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Barber.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion. I make a motion that the Board of Supervisors award the Master Lease Financing Program, RFP, to BBNT and approve reimbursement resolution number 2017-12-04.
Second. Motion, Mr. Barksdale, seconded by Mr. Davis. Any discussion? Seeing the roll call on the slip.
Mr. Barber.
Yes.
Mr. Haggerman.
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock.
Stain.
Mr. Scares.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Barksdale.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Vanderheide. Moving along, Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy List approval. Mr. Seid.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. If you recall, this project was brought to the board's attention at the last meeting. Each year, in cooperation with the West Peamont Planning District Commission, we develop a Comprehensive Economic Development Priority Projects List. These are projects that need to be on this list in order to be eligible for federal funding. Since I gave this list out for you to review, I have not received any comments back from any board members, and have also coordinated with our Director of Economic Development, Mr. Rowe, and he has not recommended any revisions. So, we have the list before you tonight, and we need to have the list approved so that we can send the notice back to the Planning District Commission before the end of December.
Thank you, Mr. Seid. Voice please.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the proposed CEDS Priority Projects List and authorize the county administrator to send this in, and the required EDA supplemental letter to the WPPDC to be incorporated into its regional 2018-2019 CEDS update.
Motion made by Mr. Blackstock.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Scares. Any discussion? Roll call on the slip.
Mr. Barksdale.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Scares.
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock.
Yes.
Mr. Haggerman.
Yes.
Mr. Barber.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes. Item C, Award Chiller Replacement Bid and Corresponding Appropriation. Mr. Hicks.
Okay, good evening. Luckily, our building and grounds supervisor was our high bidder. And I think his estimate was, at the time, $250,000. At 2:00 yesterday, we did receive four bids. Our lowest bid is from Comfort System USA in the amount of $151,473. So, substantially less than what our estimates were. We did ask for a five-year extended warranty, and the additional cost of that warranty would be $11,169 for a total bid price of $162,642. And we recommend the awarded bid to Comfort System USA in the amount of $162,642.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks. Voice please.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we award the bid as Mr. Hicks worded in his presentation.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, seconded by Mr. Barber. Any discussion or questions from Mr. Hicks?
Just one point. This board was made aware of this issue a long time ago by a former county, Assistant County Administrator, Otis Hawker. He put us on notice when we did the other work over there that this was coming and that we should prepare for it. So, we can't say we didn't know it was coming.
And they said it would take about 90 days for it to get here. So, it's going to be right at cooling season when it arrives.
We'll get it fixed before it gets hot over in the courthouse.
And we hope so.
Any other discussion or questions? Seeing the roll call on the slip.
Mr. Barber.
Yes.
Mr. Haggerman.
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock.
Yes.
Mr. Scares.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Barksdale.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes. Item 12A, Appointments to Plan and Commission. The slip, do you have it? I got lost. Okay, the floor.
Mr. Chairman, I spoke to Moore Stowe. His health has improved. He does a lot better. He wants to serve again. So, I make a motion to reappoint Moore Stowe for the planning of the mission.
Motion made by Mr. Barber. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Barber, seconded by Mr. Blackstock. Any discussion? Roll call on the slip.
Mr. Barber.
Yes.
Mr. Haggerman.
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock.
Yes.
Mr. Scares.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Barksdale.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes. Item 12B will be Damboll Regional Foundation Grants.
It's 13A.
13A. And this Vanderheide, can we just move on?
13A. This Vanderheide.
I get the motion.
We received notification today of two community foundation grants that were awarded to the county, and we were adding those to tonight's meeting because they have to be signed and sent back to them by January the 10th, which will be before your next meeting. One of these grants totaled $11,745 to outfit the Pennsylvania Pet Center with a commercial washer and dryer. And the second grant was applied for by the Recreation Department, and the total of that one was $25,000 to improve the trail surface conditions on the Ringgold Rail Trail. And neither of these grants require a local match, so we just need you all to approve these tonight and authorize the county administrator to sign the appropriate documents and to appropriate that to the Grants Fund for Expenditure.
Voice please.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of Supervisors approve and appropriate two community foundation grants totaling $36,745 to the Grants Fund and authorize the county administrator to sign the appropriate grant agreement to accept $11,745 to outfit the Pennsylvania Pet Center with a commercial washer and dryer, and $25,000 to improve trail surface conditions on the Ringgold Rail Trail.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, seconded by Mr. Barksdale. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing the roll call on the slip.
Mr. Barber.
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock.
Yes.
Mr. Scares.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
And for the last time this year, Mr. Haggerman.
Yes.
And Mr. Barksdale.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes. Before we get into board announcements, we're going to do them a little different tonight. We're going to have everybody go, and we're going to reserve the last comments for Mr. Haggerman and Mr. Barksdale as this is their last meeting. So, we will start with Mr. Barber, if that's okay with you.
That's fine. I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and hope we're happy, new year and safe. And also, it's too ready. They said Pennsylvania County have the lowest unemployment they've had in years. I didn't hear the exact number, but that's good news. Speaks volumes to what we're doing with economic development. And I'd like to congratulate Mr. Haggerman on his retirement. It's been a pleasure serving with you. We enjoyed it. And Mr. Barksdale, I respect you a lot. We always agree on everything, but we formed a board that's really accomplished a lot. You've been involved in a lot of things we've accomplished to move forward, and I appreciate your insight, and I enjoyed it. Good luck to both of you.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstock.
I would like to, I'm a little choked up tonight. I would like for the public to know that we've had a lot of tragedy recently with accidents and loss of life, especially in the northern end of the county, and I'd just like for you to remember those families in your thoughts and prayers. A lot of tragic events that have occurred. We lost a person in the Renaun community, one of my neighbors, in an accidental near Riceville this past few days, and had two other tragedies recently in the county. So, through the holidays, let's remember those folks. The second thing is, before I get to the end, is the Christmas season. Let's remember what Christmas is all about and take a time to step back and look at our own lives. I know I do every year at Christmas and New Years and think about the blessings that I have in my own life. We get kind of wrapped up in all the bad things going on, but sometimes you have to step back and think about all the good things in your life. I spent the weekend with my grandchildren, and never dreamed that being a grandfather would be so, so much fun. They really don't care about my opinions at all, and I kind of like that. Over the last few years, it's been an honor to serve with both Mr. Haggerman and Mr. Barksdale. It's like Mr. Barber said earlier, we don't always agree on issues, but both of these gentlemen have been statesmen and have been very good board members, representing the people that sent them here. And I think sometimes politicians forget, after they've been in office a while, who they really represent. And I think in the end, neither one of these gentlemen ever did. I know Mr. Haggerman, I know he stood up and fought. He represents a very conservative district, and he stood up a lot of times against a majority-only board to express his concerns about some of the things the board was doing, and I respect him for that. And I hope that he and his wife enjoy their retirement. He deserves it. He's had a career in law enforcement, in the coal mines, and a lot of, he's lived a very colorful and eventful life, and I hope he enjoys his retirement. Mr. Barksdale, he stood up for the citizens that he represented in the Banister District, all citizens. If it's one thing I can say about Mr. Barksdale, because of the State Department requirements, we have what's called a minority represented district. But he never represented just a minority in that district. He represented all the people, and I never saw him make a decision based on anything but what was good for the entire population of Pennsylvania County. And not only I knew Jerry because we worked together in the past, but I became, I became close friends with Mr. Barksdale, and I can tell you, I am, he is a person of integrity, and it's been an honor to serve with him on this board also, and I hate to see both of these gentlemen leave.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstock. Mr. Scares.
Wow. It's kind of hard to follow all those statements from Mr. Haggerman and Jesse Barksdale. I don't think the public understands how much we're doing this job is a sacrifice, and both these guys have put in the effort, the time, and I truly appreciate what they've done. And it'd be sad for us to see them go, but I know they're going to be happier in retirement, you know, after doing this job for so many years. I'd also like to thank Jim Davis. I publicly thank him for all the work he did on getting the 9-1-1 tower system upgraded. He did a lot of coordinating with Harris and got us some cut-rate costs on the equipment we're going to need as far as getting those towers put up. And to me, you know, $2 million is a drop in the bucket to the safety of our first responders, and I really appreciate the hard work he put in for helping us out with that. And lastly, I just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. I hope everyone's safe.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstock.
I would like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas as well. The two gentlemen that are departing, Jerry Haggerman, I studied him three years ago out there in the public and watched him, and he always reminded me of Walter, Walter Mathew, but he was as silly as Walter was. But the thing I like about Jerry is that, two things stand out. Fiscally responsible, extremely tight on a dollar bill and a penny, extremely tight. We didn't always agree, but I always loved him, and we were always friends, he and his wife. And the other thing about Jerry Haggerman that I respect greatly is that he's a very honest man. He's never lied to me. He's always gave me insight on people, persons, situations, and things to help me in this position. Now, Mr. Barksdale, I concur with what was said earlier. He has been a big mainstay and a help to me when I ran for this office. Color didn't mean anything to him in that day and time. He walked doors with me. He was very supportive of me, and he was a cheerleader to help me and give me insight on what to do, how to run a campaign. And he's always been someone that I could always call on anytime, and he always responded and got back to me and gave me a lot of support, and I do appreciate that, Mr. Barksdale, as well. He's a, he's a good bass player, too.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Mr. Haggerman, I am sorry that your spouse is not here tonight because I know that she has been right there by your side through these six years of your service. And Mr. Scares reflected on it just a second ago. This is not an easy job. It takes a lot of time, and you're not ever going to please everybody. And sometimes we would like to be able to do it exactly the way you want it done, but it just isn't practical. So, these gentlemen have shown a lot of courage in being there willing to serve. And Mr. Haggerman, Mr. Davis, I would echo those same sentiments. He has certainly been a man of integrity, and in all of the comments and conversations I've had with him, he looked me in the eye and told me what he thought, whether we agreed or not, and we were able to agree to disagree and remain friends and remain professional and courteous. And Mr. Haggerman, you will be missed dearly, and I appreciate serving with you the last two years. I wished your spouse was here tonight, but I'll reach out to her because I'll miss seeing her because it's been rare in the two years that I've served with Mr. Haggerman that she hadn't sat right back there next to the post. And that just again shows the service, not only of Mr. Haggerman, but his entire family. Because trust me when I tell you that our families are a big part of what we do and the sacrifice that it takes for us to provide the time and effort that we put in. And it's our privilege to serve, but it is a part of service. So, Mr. Haggerman, thank you very much for your service.
Thank you.
Mr. Barksdale.
It's my turn.
Not yet. Still my turn. I don't know what to say because Mr. Barksdale reached out to me when I first indicated I was going to run and began to meet with me and talk with me and talk to me about regionalism and cooperative efforts and working together and crossing lines and, you know, not coming in with your own agenda. And it was invaluable advice, and I appreciate that very much. And it was invaluable advice, and I appreciate that very much. And throughout the two years that I've served with him, he's continued to do that. And at the last RIFA meeting, I thought it was summed up pretty well by someone else. When you look at Mr. Barksdale, you see a statesman. And, Mr. Barksdale, it has been my privilege to serve with you the last two years, and I'm gonna steal his thunder a little bit because he let it out of the bag at the RIFA meeting. He's not done yet, so he, he wanted to make sure of that statement, so I stole a little bit of his thunder, so, uh, but it has truly been my pleasure, my friend, and, uh, I do call him my friend because we have developed that relationship. I'm not saying we agree a hundred percent of the time, but again, we agree to disagree and, and go forward. Mr. Barksdale, thank you very much for your service. Pennsylvania County is much better having had these two men for the last six years, and, uh, they're, they're big shoes to fill. And before I yield the floor, I wanna wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. I want, wanna tell Mr. Henderson, who's here tonight, representing the school board, we appreciate you being here. Mr. Henderson, we appreciate the relationship we have with you all, and, uh, we look forward to working with you all going forward. And, Mr. Ben Farmer, glad to have you here tonight. Get ready. We'll be here next time. Thank you very much for being here, and again, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and I will yield to our county administrator, if he has any comments, before I turn it forward to these two gentlemen.
Sure. I'll be very brief. Um, just wanna give you a couple of updates, uh, about to the board, to the public. Uh, first is, and the board members are aware, that we will have our reorganization meeting on January fourth at five o'clock at Center Street, Office One, Center Street. Um, wanted to also bring your attention, we have begun our concerted effort to, uh, inform our citizenry, those that are interested in the, the difficult decisions that you will be faced with in the next four months. Uh, it's been well-received, um, by both supporters and naysayers, um, but the point is, we're getting information out, and we're using Facebook, Twitter, newspapers, our website, blog posts, and YouTube, News Media, however we can, uh, to make sure every citizen in this county that wants information can get information easily. Um, and I appreciate very much, uh, the effort that all of our staff has put in toward that. Um, update on our green box, uh, the trash receptacles, mostly in the Cowlins and Banister areas, but a few, a few sparse areas, uh, that are served by compactors. We are nearly complete in bringing in those sites that will not be continuing, but we do have some sites reevaluated. Uh, we've heard from several citizens, um, that have brought some valid concerns to our attention that we were not aware of, and so we have delayed the removal of a couple sites as Mr. Hicks, um, spends a little extra time to determine the appropriate location, the appropriate size or number of green boxes at those remaining sites. I just wanna let you know that we take that very seriously, and we are not, if we make a wrong decision, we're gonna figure that out very quickly and correct it. Um, but before we make a wrong decision, we're gonna make sure we have all the information to support those decisions. So, I appreciate Mr. Hicks' efforts there. Um, it is incredibly hard to believe, it's been a year. Uh, it's been a year and nineteen days, uh, that I've been with you. It is amazing what we have gotten done, uh, especially the last six to eight months, and the credit really is to our senior staff members at Pennsylvania County. These are folks that, um, they were here when I got here, and they have put forward a level of effort that, um, you know, I've never seen a team jump so quickly. So many people come in a room without egos and try to solve problems for the benefit of our citizens, and it has been a tremendous joy, uh, and very professionally and personally rewarding, um, to work with you for the last year and to work with the staff of the county. And I'm very much looking forward to many more years with you. I have a special place on my wall, for those of you that have been in the last few weeks, there, uh, if you'll remember, y'all took a picture in front of the love sign. I had Jerry's picture and I had Jesse's picture on that wall for all of eternity, and it's great to have that to memorialize, uh, the first board that was fortunate enough to work with here at Pennsylvania County. Truly appreciate the opportunity to serve with you, Mr. Barksdale, and you, Mr. Hagman, and truly enjoy our personal and professional relationship. I wish you absolutely the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tron, do you have anything to add?
No, I just wish everybody a Merry Christmas and love the reason for the season, and, uh, slow down and, and love your loved ones this, this holiday, because we, we get so busy that we, we forget what's important in life sometimes.
Mr. Hagman, your turn.
Actually, ladies and gentlemen, uh, every meeting, I would look back over the, uh, audience, and I would, uh, see people that, uh, that I know, uh, some, uh, some I really liked and some I knew were just gonna give me a hard time. But, uh, anyway, that, uh, that went with, with the cheer. Now, what I really want to say is, I, I want to thank the citizens of the Cowlins, Grant and District, supporting me over the past six years. Uh, they, some of them's just been absolutely wonderful. Uh, some of them, just like members of my own family, I mean, they just, uh, uh, every time I look at them, I, I just realize that I really care so much of them, and, uh, and I'm not gonna stop seeing them. Mr. Farmer, if I'm still alive and, uh, when you go out of office, I'll come back if they will, if you like me. So, uh, I'll, I'll probably be divorced at that time. But anyway, I've seen, uh, several members of, of the, uh, previous boards, uh, Supervisor Leves, and others that are still here, and I wish you the best, absolutely. Uh, remember, and I really don't have to say this to these members of the board, but remember, you work for our citizens only as long as they will allow you to. So, it, it means be just as good as you can be to them. Uh, this is, this is actually my third retirement. It's, uh, second from Pennsylvania County, and I owe the remainder of that to my wife. Uh, she has stood by me whatever I decided to do, whether, sometimes even, even when it wasn't, uh, good for her. But, uh, you know, you can't talk nothing about, about your wife. I look at her every day, and, uh, I realize she washes my clothes, she irons my clothes no matter what they are, and, uh, she makes sure I'm dressed to suit her, not anybody else. So, uh, that's what I'm going for. Uh, we've, uh, I feel we're gonna spend a, a lot of, a lot of years, uh, owned together, and that's, uh, that's the only thing I can, I can hope, hope for. And, uh, thank, thank you, everybody, here.
Mr. Barksdale?
Thank you all. I appreciate all the kind words that, um, have been spoken. I'm gonna be short, but I, just a couple of things I wanna, I want to mention. I was born here in Pennsylvania County, and we moved away when I was about thirteen, and I never thought I would be, uh, coming back to the state of Virginia to live or play or anything. And my, uh, career took me to a different path, and I only came back occasionally to see relatives here in this area. I had a stellar career in aviation with the Federal Aviation Administration. Look, I never thought when I was a kid, walk in and play in the tobacco fields, that someday, because I, I knew what I wanted to, to be when I was, by the time I was nine or ten, and that was to fly airplanes and to play guitar. And God blessed me to be able to do those, both of those things well, and that, that turned out to be a career. Now, retired and came back here, and what a, what an experience. I didn't, wasn't looking to, uh, get involved in, um, politics, if you wanna call that, or run for a office or whatever. It just happened, uh, and I'm glad that it did because the thing that gave me most joy is helping other people. I learned at a very early age that the quickest way to get a, a blessing, if you will, is to do something for other people. My mom taught us as part of the, the golden rule, and, and to treat people the way you wanna be treated and all those kinds of things. But, Mr. Chairman and everybody on this board, it has truly been an honor to serve with the governing body of Pennsylvania County, Virginia. It wasn't planned. I didn't dream about doing that, but I'll tell ya, the more I did, the more I want, want to do. So, right now, I'm just running, running out of time. The citizens, it's just been a pleasure, um, and I had to sometime, uh, sort of tap myself on the head and say, am I really doing this? So, it's been an honor to represent not only the citizens in the Banister District, but in Pennsylvania County as a whole. I never diff- differentiated, uh, Banister from anybody else that was looking for, uh, answer to a ques- a tough question or what. I mean, I was therefore tried to be for all the citizens, so I will never forget that. It will always be with me for the rest of my life, and I wanna say that here in Pennsylvania County, we have some of the best employees that I've ever worked with, and I mean that sincerely. We have some dynamite personalities and people that are smart, and they are humble, and they want the same thing. They work each and every day. They find their own motivation. It comes from somewhere, and I think it's, it comes from them wanting this county to be the best, and they want to, the, the, they want to always do something or find a way to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens, or just serving the citizens. So, I wanna thank members of the staff. I wanna thank our current coun- county administrator, our attorney. There's not a supervisor up here who does not want to, um, to serve the citizens and protect that oath that we gave, and that is to protect the health and the welfare and the safety of the people. We have a, a good chemistry with this current board. It was, we had some different people when I came on. Uh, interpersonal communication is so, um, so, um, it's so important, and I heard some of the, my fellow supervisors say, we don't always agree, and that's true, but we have the, we have the humility, the awareness, and sensitivity to say, you know, we don't have to, we don't have to have the same answer. We don't have to say the same thing. But when it comes to voting, you stand up and you vote what you believe in. I had a, the late Marshall Ecker told me that my first year. Jesse, don't be afraid to stand up and vote for what you believe is right, and I think we all do that, and we still continue to work together. I'm going long. I didn't mean to go on, but it was a wonderful, um, it has been a wonderful time, and I thank you all very much.
One last thing. As, as one of the people that does have a lot of humility, but serves the board well, it's Ms. Flippin, our clerk, and we wanna wish you a Merry Christmas on the board, and we have a great time.
Thank you.
Ms. Flippin does so much in keeping us on task with the agenda, but also, uh, following our work sessions. She usually has dinner for us, and real often, it's from her kitchen, which is great. It, uh, might be why I've added a few pounds since, uh, I came on the board, but we appreciate you very much, and we certainly hope, wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. No other business to come before the board. I declare the meeting adjourned.